Welcome to the June 23, 2022 Parma City School District Board of Education Work Session. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name.
Roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Brass.
Present.
Mrs. Carpe. Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Luna.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present. I just want to start out first by saying I apologize for the technical difficulties. We are getting a five-minute late start, so our apologies. And now we'll commence with the meeting. So unless there's any objection, we will dispense from the reading of the special meeting notice. Dr. Smolik, can you please confirm the public portion of this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the public portion of this meeting? And if there is a problem, please speak immediately so that technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, sir.
Just a reminder, community members are welcome to attend the work sessions, I think. However, there is not an opportunity to participate. Okay, so floor is yours, sir, to tell us about the levy discussion.
Okay, so we have a number of items to work through tonight. Our intent is really to provide clarity, first in terms of the bond issue of where we stand, and then secondly, we have Mr. Manteloff in. At the last meeting, Mr. Manteloff has a wealth of knowledge, but our job is to take everything he presented and sort of condense it into some recommendations for you. Certainly off of the recommendations, we're open to any questions that you may have from the information that we provide this evening. First, I want to talk about the resolutions. And first, before I go into what they really entail, I want to apologize. It's not necessarily how we like to do business. The OFCC is known for at least six weeks when we intended to vote to move ahead with an expedited local partnership program or an ELPP. ELPP denotes that we pay the entire portion, the entire cost of a construction project upfront, which is why our bond issue is significant. And they then owe us for the co-funded segment later. That's what ELP stands for, Expedited Local Partnership. I mean, local shares really leading the way. So they've known that we intended to move forward with this for quite some time. They sent us the resolutions this evening, this afternoon, at what, 2:30, Sean?
Yeah, about 2:30.
So they're hot off the presses. Luckily, we believe we can explain them. We actually have had them reviewed already by Rick Manteloff, who does this on a routine basis. But three resolutions you're going to see tonight. First, we'll identify for the OFCC the 4-2-1 plan that the district has adopted. So that's nothing new. There's nothing in that that's different. You actually adopted that really at the end of April, I believe. So it's been...
March.
Yeah, the end of March, right. So all that is, is codifying for the OFCC, you know, that that's what our plan is. The second one is that it accepts a half-mill set-aside requirement for maintenance of new facilities. So that's part of the OFCC regulations. It, however, allows us to delay that until receiving state share. So for us, a half-mill is approximately $1.3 million. So when we would get the state share, we would be committed to using one-half or one-half mill or $1.3 million for maintenance of new facilities. We already have that in permanent improvement. Obviously, we would be using it anyway to maintain new buildings. So it's not really a burden for us. The chore for us is identifying that we're going to wait until CFAP actually would kick in to identify that half-mill. Does that make sense? Just want to make sure.
Mr. Murray.
Yeah.
Just, does the half-mill go onto the bond issue?
It's just earmarking what we already have.
Set aside a half-mill of our...
We already have it in permanent improvement. It's not an add-on. And that's a good question, because a lot of people asked that last time. Does this include the extra half? It's not an extra half. It's just identification of RPI, half has to go into maintaining buildings, which...
That's part of the requirement of the OFCC, that we have that money to maintain them.
Correct. And here's where that comes from. If you have no permanent improvement money, the OFCC doesn't want to contribute to building buildings that you have no ability to maintain. So we already have a permanent improvement stream. It's not going to be hard for us to identify half of a mill for continuing maintenance on what would be new buildings, anyway.
But some districts might have to add that to their...
They may, if they have no permanent improvement.
If they don't have another...
Again, they don't want to build buildings where there's no stream of funding to maintain the buildings.
Well, that makes sense.
The third part is what Pam just delivered to you. It's a really long, and this is why I really apologize, because I know especially, I know you're all very thorough, but some of you are more thorough than others. But this is the ELP, actually, agreement. So it's the thick packet that Mrs. Barkowski just delivered to you. The only specific notation to Parma that we have any control over, meaning you're going to see a lot of numbers in there, their cost, their valuation of the district, but the only thing that we actually, as a district, have some say over is exactly what I just described to you. So if you flip to page five...
I know they're not numbered.
They're not numbered. On page five, about halfway down is number seven. And what number seven asks is, how are you going to do your set-aside for maintenance? And ours, again, we're selecting number six, which allows us to delay that maintenance fund until we receive CFAP. CFAP is, you know, again, when it's our turn. It's a Classroom Facilities Assistance Program. So ELP puts us in, gets us into the OFCC project, which is great. They owe us the 37% for the construction of the new high school. When we get the CFAP money, we have to earmark one half of a mill or $1.3 million to the maintenance of all of the new facilities, which, again, sort of common sense, anyway. We would have it in permanent improvement. It's not an addition, I want to be very clear. Sean, have I misspoken or anything you want to clarify?
It's not like we have to use the $1.3 million every year. It goes in the fund 034, so maybe it's fine. And it sits there until you need to do repairs.
Until you need it, right.
It could be like something breaks, you need a boiler, or you need this.
God, I would hope we wouldn't need any boiler.
No, but I'm just giving an example.
Let's hope that grows and grows and grows.
Because you don't have to spend the money every year.
Right.
That is for our entire program that we sent to OFCC, even though we're just doing the high school now?
That's correct. We will not have to earmark that until we get the CFAP. And we don't get the CFAP until we're ready to build everything. You're correct. Now, the other piece I want to point out, because, again, I know this is short notice to get such a lengthy document, but we did ask Rick to look this over. I said, "Rick, to me, this looks like it's all, you know, standard numbers, valuations, costs, et cetera. Is there anything in here we need to alert the board to?" He said, "No, Charlie, that is boilerpoint language. They've just inserted, you know, Parma-specific, again, costs and valuations, et cetera." So the only part where we sort of have some input into what this document looks like is the piece that I just described to you, which was that checking off that we're not going to put a set-aside of the half-mill until we actually get the CFAP money. So all three of those, then, are on the agenda this evening. Sean also has one, and I'll let Sean sort of describe the 2022-06-249.
So when we go to this new project, because it's such a large project, there's different deadlines. There's 120-day deadline, which we have to notify the Department of Taxation of this levy. Well, you guys are not voting on this levy until July 14th, which is going to be within 120 days. So this resolution, 2022-06-249, allows me to file paperwork with the Ohio Department of Taxation. If you guys decide to move forward, then the procedural stuff has been done. I described it...
Are you looking at this, Nick?
Yes.
Okay.
So I described it, I described this to Dr. Smolik as saying...
It's one next to your right hand there.
The chart thing.
So you didn't preface that we were starting on.
Well, you...
I'm still looking at the big picture.
Okay. So I described it to Dr. Smolik as, if you're going to buy a house, you've got to get pre-qualified. This resolution is us getting pre-qualified to move ahead. And if you guys decide on July 14th you don't want to vote for it, then it's just, okay, we're pre-qualified, but we're not buying the house. If you do decide to go forward, then, okay, we're pre-qualified, and we can go ahead with buying the house. So that's, it's just a procedural, this is not saying tonight we are going forward to that. It's just saying...
Because I voted until July 14th. So, yeah, and then that comes later, but the two readings would be the 14th, and then what I'm hoping will be the 27th. 27th is a Wednesday. The only scheduled meeting in July right now is the 14th. 27th is flexible. We just need to have a second reading. On the 28th, I've committed to go to Robert Early's community ward safety meeting.
Oh, I do have some on the 28th.
So I'd like to still do that. I think that's a really good opportunity for us. But again, we can be flexible if the board's not available on the 27th. We just simply need to get two readings in, so...
And that's when the vote will be taken, on the 27th.
And the 14th.
Oh, there's two votes?
Yeah.
The 14th, the first one is, so they ask the budget commission to give us cost. How much is it going to cost? How many mills and all this stuff? The second resolution is, the board wants to proceed to the balance.
They vote twice, though, right? 14th and the 27th?
The 14th...
But they would both have to be affirmative in order to have it moved forward. Got you.
All right. So any questions about tonight's resolutions? Again, just want to reinforce that none of this ties us into moving forward, but they're all necessary, you know, steps in the process.
Steps in the process.
Something we have to do.
I'm on your...
Cindy, that's my hand up. I think I'm going to keep going.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just on his part right now. Haven't even begun.
Well, I'm on page three.
Yeah. Usually, you're the most thorough one, so you don't typically jump ahead. So further considerations, then, for the bond issue, seeing no questions on tonight's resolutions, just necessary steps, that's all these are. All right, further issues. So this is getting more specific in terms of how our cost breaks down and, you know, what's in there. The only thing that would be newsworthy to the board, I think, at this point, would be, GPD asked us the difference, or they asked us if we wanted a performing arts center or an auditorium. An auditorium typically has more seats, but is not as performance-friendly in terms of acoustics, in terms of location of seating, in terms of the actual shape of the stage. They recommend performing arts center. If the board wants me to gather further information about that, I can, but their bullet points were, again, better acoustics, amplification, stage closer, smaller, more intimate feel. That's a slightly higher cost than an auditorium, again, just because of the more sophisticated acoustics. And so that was at $8 million, where I believe an auditorium would be approximately $6.
How many seats would the auditorium be? Doesn't say on here for, if someone says that.
Yeah, it doesn't, and I didn't ask him for that in specific. He did say it would be more seats, but I can get that if you want.
Eight hundred and one.
Eight hundred is...
For performing arts, what I mean.
Eight hundred and one.
Yeah, eight hundred and one. I can ask him that, Mark. Number of seats, auditorium. Everything else on there is really, you know, pretty much as we've discussed. The total cost is $237.7, really rounded up, $237.8. The bond issue itself will be a $3.95 mill, which is in the ballpark of what we've discussed. We were at $3.75 mill. However, it is consistent with the dollar figure that we've discussed. We've been saying $11 per $100,000. $3.95 is $11.52, or $11.52, I should say. Sorry, I was still in village. So 150, you see how that breaks out, $17.28, $200,000 is $23.05. Now, what we have to identify clearly for the board is that to bridge the gap there, because we were intent on staying below four, and in my estimation, again, this is just senior leadership team, really, you know, thinking that we really like to keep that price as low as possible, so we have to bridge the gap between 194.5 million, which $3.95 mills we'll raise, and the 237 million. And so we do that with a COPS issue. We discussed COPS before. The COPS issue is, you know, essentially, you're borrowing money against your permanent improvement fund. We would borrow $43 million off of our permanent, against our permanent improvement fund. We'd pay back $2.8 million per year. And so if you flip over to the next page, that leaves us with $2.985 million still to spend in the permanent improvement levy, or from the permanent improvement levy. That is doable. It's, well, more than that, sure we do, but, I mean, at that point, you're sort of deciding, you know, we could go less of a COPS issue, but then it's going to be more expensive. And quite frankly, I would love to keep it below four. I'd love to keep it at 3.95. I think that's important. I think that's an important point. And I think there's no reason we can't do permanent improvement at $2.985 while we're paying back the COPS. Then the other piece, I described the performing arts center versus auditorium. All right, we'll get the seats for you.
Excuse me, Dr. Smolik.
Yes, ma'am.
To clarify, bond issue is 37 years.
36, actually, for some reason.
36.
Yeah, I don't know why they changed it to 36. I never really got a clear explanation on that.
It went down. That's more important. That's the best part of it, in a year, but still. So the COPS would also be 36.
COPS is 30 years.
30.
30-year payback.
That can be paid off early.
No, the COPS...
With the OFCC money, if we got it, could we pay that off early?
That's a good question.
To free up your...
Can you rephrase what, say it again?
Once the OFCC gives us the state share, could we use part of that money to pay back that loan so that we can free up our permanent improvement money? So we don't tie it up for 30 years.
That would have to be if the bond agreement allows us to...
No, it would be a COPS agreement, Sean.
You're covering the bond.
COPS, similar COPS.
Yeah.
COPS.
So I'm sorry. Say it again.
Once we get the money from the state, because we use a portion of that to pay off a COPS loan so that we can free up that money, so we don't have to pay that for 30 years.
I, we give pretty much the same answer. If the agreement allows us to pay off early.
So it would have to be written into that?
Yeah, we would have to, we have to, to board, we have to talk with Manteloff again about that.
You can ask that, too. On the flip side, though, what that does is make your bond issue more expensive.
No, no, no. I'm saying, yeah, you use, but just, oh, yeah, your next round would make it, right, but, I mean, if you didn't want to lock up your PIA money for 30 years, you could add that option to pay that down.
You could, yes. Well, that's something we have to check into.
Right, right.
Yes, meaning I understand the question.
Maybe if you had, if you at least have the option to do it, you can see where you stand with your PIA money at that point, and if you needed more than the $2.9 that we would have left, then we could maybe make that determination.
House, you have a mortgage. Sometimes they say, you're allowed to pay it back, but if you pay back more than you're allowed to, there's a prepayment penalty or something. So we'd have to look into that. There's such a penalty.
That's a good question. It's definitely worth looking at. We can definitely answer that for the next, actually, we can answer it sooner than the next meeting. All right, so those two considerations, then. So the next steps, then, would be the two readings, again, 14th and the 27th. More than open to change in the 27th, just need to get some type of second meeting there. And again, I'd like to stay away from the 28th, because I think that's a good community outreach piece. So everything to this point has been bond issue only, and then we're going to start about operating. But before we go to operating, does anybody want to ask questions about bond?
I'll say something. Just clarifying again, so the bond's 36 years?
Correct.
And the bond would be $3.95.
$3.95.
Plus, $11.52, I'm just rewriting, I'm quoting, per $100,000.
Correct.
Sounds, seems doable, reasonable, in my point. Anybody else? I'm subject to things, but my good head, I go ahead.
Okay, so looking forward, because we also have this owner's operating side to worry about as well. We call the bond issue, right? That's the fun stuff. That's the sexy stuff. The operating stuff is what we need to keep paying bills, though, so that's the meat and potatoes. Looking forward, as I emailed to the board this afternoon, we have met and identified some additional cuts that we can make for next year, for '23, '24. These were cuts that were not built into the $3.1 million in anticipated consolidation savings. This is in addition to what we've already shared. So when you give that parameter or that consideration, along with not going outside, you know, we've settled with PEA, obviously, that's on for this evening. So we still are unsettled with OC, but, you know, sticking with those same parameters we set from the onset, which obviously are, you know, sort of confidential agreements that we've determined, when you fold all of those things in, you're looking at a $7.8 million deficit in '26. So that's quite a bit better than what we had been looking at with $24 million deficit. Now, what we would recommend, when you look at our operating levy projections, you see, you know, the current emergency levies underneath, you see when they are last collected, it's all the way to the right of that first line. We would recommend a substitute levy in the spring of '23. Substitute levies, approximately $7.9 mills, and that would combine those middle two emergency levies, the one that ends collection in '24, the one that ends collection in '27. To recap, a substitute levy, which Mr. Manteloff went through, but he went through many things, the dollar amount on existing property is frozen. So it essentially functions as a renewal for anybody living in a house. So Frank Bender is going to pay X dollars now, votes for the substitute levy, he's going to pay X dollars tomorrow, the next day, the next day, the next day. That doesn't change for Frank Bender. But if Amy Popovich comes in and builds a new house, it allows us to collect on that and still keep collecting the same amount we were from Frank. In the past, don't forget, his valuation went up, millage goes down. So Frank would actually benefit from Amy's new construction because he would pay less. A substitute levy doesn't do that. Frank's always going to pay, let's say, $12. But then Amy's going to pay that $12, too, because that's what a substitute levy does. I don't know why, but that's the function of a substitute levy.
If her home was the same value as Frank's.
If the home was the same value, assuming same value, correct. Yeah. So that would allow us to get two renewals, you know, sort of taken care of in one vote. We would also look at that point to make it a continuing, just being transparent, meaning to continue to come back over and over and over, even when it's for the same dollar figure. And we still, you know, there's such a concept as ballot fatigue, and quite frankly, I think we're going to run into it. Then, in the fall of '24, and this is worst-case scenario, I want to be really clear about worst-case scenario. That's if we can't do anything about that $7.8 million balance in '26. In the fall of '24, we would need to look for new operating money. What I show you is the millage, and then how the millage would delay another ask. So how long would, for instance, in that first box, if we pass the 4.0 in the fall of '24, it'd still be red again in '27. Not going to get us a whole lot. And you really have to get into the further down numbers to start to move that last solvent year out, which, in all honesty, is relatively frustrating, because those are pretty big millage numbers that don't get us a whole lot of time, but it's also what we've been able to calculate with Sean's help. So that was two pieces, sort of in one, and let's pause again and see if there's any questions before we go into sort of what we're recommending.
Well, just for clarity, by combining those two emergency levies, the '24 and the '27, can I, can, we understand what I'm talking about, the '24 and '27?
Got you.
For $7.9, but we want to turn it into a continuing instead of a 10-year renewal, correct?
That's correct.
If it fails, we still collect for the rest of that time period, and we could go the following year for a renewal of emergency.
This gives us a whole year buffer in between, yeah. I mean, if we see that there's no appetite, we just haven't been able to explain what the substitute levy does, I mean, we still would have the fall of '23, the spring of '24, the fall of '24, before we really, you know...
That's my concern. It's a tough climb to get people to understand what's happening there. Perhaps, maybe I'm...
No, perhaps. I mean, I guess...
It's confusing sometimes.
You boil it down to existing houses, homeowners pay no more. That's, I mean, in the end, that's what it is. And if there's some type of nice new development, or Ford puts on some big, GM puts on some big, you know, ad, oh, we're going to collect on that, which is good. But I agree. I mean, any change is a risk.
How does it differ from what we have now in the emergencies if we get nice new housing anyway?
We wouldn't know. We'd have to see how much that's worth.
On the emergency levies, you can only collect the dollar amount there. It's listed, the 7603 and the 8062. You can collect that. If the new house is built, you don't collect anymore.
Gotcha.
That's it.
Yeah.
It's frozen to the dollar amount. The substitute levy allows for new revenue on new construction.
Gotcha. I forgot about putting that piece together with it.
So basically, all the developments that they built recently, we've collected no new money on it.
Correct.
But if this had been done, we would have been collecting new money on it.
Right.
Remember, there's two businesses that go up all the time, construction, and we're not getting any of those revenues we're opposing.
Now, on the flip side, the good part is that that also takes...
Reduces.
Reduces the tax burden on others. Because now you've got, you know, more hands feeding into the one sum. This, that sum can actually fluctuate now. The hands that have been paying in are never going to pay more, but guess what? These new hands are handing you some more.
Which, you know, it's kind of attractive to think of it maybe going down, but it doesn't help the district. And if you, you know, in order to help the district so you don't have to go for more money...
And because of, because of reappraisals, typically, you don't know as much, anyway.
Your value goes up, the yield goes down, but it's a wash. You're going to save them out.
Yeah. So that's substitute and projected worst-case scenario. Now, the next piece comes our recommendation. And what I show you first, these OFCC cost increases are from 1999. And I guess this is in preparation for the answer or the question of people who say, "Well, we've got inflation, it's going to go down, it's a bad time to build, it's a bad time to borrow, it's a bad time to ask for more money." But every year, save 2015, when there was no increase, some type of cost increase in the OFCC dollar figures.
We get 2020.
Yeah, even 2020. I didn't even remember that being much of an inflation year, but, so...
Did you try to buy wood?
I did.
Yeah. It went from $2 a stud to $7 for a...
That was 2020.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't seem that long ago. So our recommendation would be, let's go all out. Let's put it out for the voters. We know that there's discord, you knock down Parma Senior High, et cetera. Well, here we go. And this is not, this wasn't part of the game, this isn't, but we have an option, an opportunity, an option, to build the Queen of High Schools at $11.53 per month. And this also allows us to continue to reduce spending. We just showed you $1.2 million more. As Sean said this afternoon, and I don't like to put words in his mouth, but I will to make sure that we're quoting him correctly, many school districts are negative in 2026. I don't necessarily want us to let 2026 scare us out of what I think is a great opportunity in the November of 2022 election, and that's to fund the Queen of High Schools. These construction costs are not going to get cheaper. Sean?
I got to talk to Dr. Smolik. Well, school districts are negative in the sixth year, or fifth year, which is 2021. or fifth year, which is 2026. I don't want, I wouldn't pretend like it's not there. We're taking steps to eliminate that solidation, cuts that Dr. Smiley talked about. So we're trying to get that number down, so you don't have to move for a levy. I don't want everyone to say, oh, it's negative, we can't do anything about it. We could take steps now to eliminate it. Earlier you take the steps, the easier it is to remove. That's what we're trying to do.
The other piece, I would say, and obviously, we can't vote in an executive session, but it would be great to hear from the board members, because, you know, if we really wait until July 27th to say, well, the board hasn't decided, and we don't do anything, I mean, we've got some really good opportunities in terms of, like, a Fourth of July parade to pass out some placards saying, hey, look what we can build. I mean, we've got some community meetings that we're already signed up to go to. Like, I don't want to do those things, and then, you know, we decide not to go forward, and people look like we already sort of have that credibility issue. At the same time, I don't want to, you know, push you past the point of comfort. I just, it'd be good to get some type of feeling about where we're, what we're thinking right now, because July can be a critical month in what would only be about a five-month campaign, anyway. That's how you want to handle that, Mr. President? I don't know.
I am. Can you, we can do an executive session? I don't know. We're at the second, I don't think.
No, I don't, I think it needs to be in public, anyway.
Talk about that in the executive session.
Yeah.
It should be.
That's what my confusion was.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think it's an open conversation. I mean, I think.
Absolutely.
And just, I guess, share where people are, honestly. I mean, I can, Jack, what are you thinking?
I'm all in. I'm all in. I think it's the time. I think it's, it's under the four mils, which I'm comfortable with. I think it's replacing, I love when you call it the queen of schools, because I haven't heard that since I was here. And I just think it's a good time. I think, I think we could, I think we could pass this levy, or this bond issue. I think it's a doable thing. And I think it's, it's a good thing for the community that we have a state-of-the-art high school to start with and to run with. And I'm 100% for it.
Cindy?
Well, I have desperate desire for new high school, you know? I mean, I, we absolutely need that, and I wish we had been able to do the whole package. Although, I think that might have been a little too ambitious, quite frankly, at one time. But I'm nervous about the economic climate. I will say that. I would have never anticipated this year to turn out the way it turned out, from the very beginning to where we are now. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. And I also agree that it's not going to get cheaper. It's, it's a, you know, something that we are where we are in terms of those kinds of costs and that kind of situation. We need an aggressive and powerful education campaign, which we've talked about, of course. When I have one-on-one conversations with people and talk to them, they really understand a lot better the need, the desire, not just the desire, and how much money it saves once it's built, and just all the many things that we've talked about. So I, I think my concern is, we have this fast-paced, changing economic situation, which is scary to me. I don't ever want the community to think that we don't respect that and understand that. And I want to make sure that they really realize that, because I feel deeply about that part of this situation, and am hopeful that people can understand that the need is great, and we're hopeful that they will consider and value education in their community, and investment in their community. We've talked many times about you can drive every direction outside of Parma and find new schools. We want to thrive as a community. Schools have got to be a big part of it. And so to attract families, to keep families here, I don't know how we don't do it, I guess. You know, I just, as hard as it is to ask, it's always hard to ask for money, but hopefully they will value it and understand that it's in the best interest of the community, not just the school district, to have new buildings and move forward with this. So that's where I'm at.
Very well thought out. Mark, good job.
Well, I was just, I said and argued, saying that Parma needs to be a part of this district going forward, so it would be kind of hard for me to say that at one time and then say, no, let's not try to make it part of it. So you kind of know where I'm standing, that, yeah, I think we should go for it. I mean, like I said, I said this building, this Parma needs to be a part of this.
I will.
No, it needs to be a part of this, so I can't say, it needs to be part of it, and then say, no, I'm not going to try to make it part of it.
Right. So you have to say, you're on board.
Yeah, no, I mean, I understand how, you know, economics, how everything is now. But, I don't know, it's always tough, tough times don't last, tough people do. This is not, we went through this kind of stuff in the seventies and all that. We made it out of it. I don't think this is life-altering, you know, or like ending economic times. It sucks, trust me. $165 to fill my tank.
I get it.
But, you know, it's not going to get better. Costs are not going to go down on building. They just won't. So the longer you wait, the more expensive it's going to be.
Yeah. My point of view on this, and I'm going to parrot what Cindy and Mark both said about the economy, it is tough, and it is hard to ask for this kind of money when the situation, I like this now, but I think that might be knee-jerkish, that, oh my gosh, you know, things going up, everything's going up. But as he said, you know, 1970s, I remember the gas lines and everything else, and we all managed to get, you know, come out of it pretty good. So I don't think, you know, as stocks go, I mean, sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down, sometimes then it goes back up. It just fluctuates. And I think that's, the economy does the same thing. So we are, I am also, you know, cognizant of the needs of the people and what's happening with money and et cetera. And I can tell you, it's a difficult situation, but, and decision, as all of them have been here lately. But I can't, I can't see us not going forward with asking the money. We're not asking the money. We need to ask for the money. We have to go forward with this. We've done, you know, I've been on the board four years already, and they kicked the can down a lot of times. And it's just, it's just time to go ahead and go forward and get it done. And that's, you know, hopefully, you know, they, people see it the way I see it. But again, the educational thing, getting out there in the community and really being educational and making people understand what it is. I did talk to someone the other day that, hey, you know, I drove by such and such school the other day. We really need new schools. They're really rundown looking. Yeah, okay, you tell your friends, you know? So it's, so, I mean, it's out there. There's a lot of people in support of it, you know, that I've talked with. And I'm sure there's people that would not be in support of it. But as far as, if I were having to vote right now, I'd vote, yeah, we're putting this on the ballot. So that's where I stand at this moment.
Make it happen, yeah?
Yep, make it happen. Make it happen. And so Amanda was supposed to be watching live, and she had questions, she was going to text me.
Is she okay?
She had some family.
Something with her mom?
Her mom and her mother-in-law, too. Oh, she got a double.
Was that who?
Double, yeah.
God was supposed to bring her. She said, ah, changed plans, I don't need to ride, go to the hospital.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're thinking about her right now, and what's going on with her family. So, no, that's where it is right now. So from the four of us sitting here, it sounds like it's something that we're strongly thinking about moving forward on.
No, and I appreciate that. And I have a number of seats, and can we pay back the loan early is a question.
Correct.
And certainly, if there's any, again, we were all frustrated. Pam, thank God she's as good as she is. We literally got these at 2:30, and she had to put them into resolutions. Thank you, Pam.
If anybody can make it happen.
There you go.
That young lady.
Pam.
But if there's, you know, questions as we go, obviously, you know, as you digest these things, we're accessible always. We always aim to be ready for your questions, so.
All right. Well, I'm going to go read this.
Good luck. It's a lot of legal issues.
Yeah.
All right. So you have anything else for us, Dr. Smiley?
I don't. Thank you very much for your time and considerations.
Okay. So I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-227 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-227. Vote call Mr. Nusiel.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Brats?
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.